All right, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at 7:04 PM. Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have an amendment to the agenda tonight. We will be adding item or consent agenda. Three D.
I move to approve the amended consent agenda with the addition of three D for the pay request.
Second, three D, I don't recognize what that is.
That's our contractor.
So under item three, sub item D.
What's up contractor already agreed they just need to be paid now?
That's that's the public works building.
So if you look at send agenda right here, it says item three section D, this is what we're adding.
It's a it's basically a pay request from the contractor building the building. Yep, and we typically put those into the consent agenda just so that you could see them. The the project's budgeted, but we want to make sure that you get to see the progress of the project.
So we need a is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the consent, the agenda is approved. Tonight, we have a presentation from the Oregon Youth Authority, Christine Pickle, Foster Care Certifier.
Hello, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to come and present today. I do have a PowerPoint, so first of all, my name is Kristen Pickle. I've been with the Oregon Youth Authority since 2015 with our foster care unit for 2017. And that is what we're going to be talking tonight a little bit about is foster care. So I want to play a little video before I get started. Now that you've seen our video, let's talk a little bit about what our program has to offer. So let's talk a little bit about O A's mission and value. Our mission is to protect the public and reduce crime by holding youth accountable and providing opportunities for reformation and safe environments, which our environments are our communities, right? So we want them to be reformed in a family situation. Our vision is that youth who leave O A go on to lead productive, crime-free lives. Next slide, please. The youth journey to O A, so how do they get to us? They commit, the youth at age 12 to 17 commits an event. They go before juvenile court judge, and that determines the needs of whether or not they need to be committed to O A. If there are high public safety risk, or they have a series of events, they will typically be sent to one of our correction facilities. Or if there are lower safety risks, then the youth typically is placed on probation and then and in the community placement. And that can be anywhere from a community program that we have, their own home, or one of our foster homes. A O A foster care is often the stepping stone. For various reasons, foster youth are unable to return to home, whether they need a little bit more guidance in the community, so then we have what we would call a wraparound service for them, right? So we put them in one of our foster homes. And we have trained our foster parents to know how to work with our kids in the community, the things and the goals that they're working towards. They also may have a counselor or things like that, that they are going to help to build those relationships in positive environments. A prospective foster parent, this is where y'all come into play. Must be at least 21 years of age. Unless you're working with our older population, 18 and older, then you have to be at least 25 to work with our youth. You have to be able to support your own bills prior to our monthly stipend that we offer. Pass a criminal background check, meet health and home safety standards, which is no surprise because we do guide you along the process. It's not just a hey, surprise, we're doing a white glove check. That is not the case. And then you need to be able to adequately provide supervision and care for our youth ages 12 to 25. What do we expect of our foster parents? We expect our foster parents to be a role model with appropriate behaviors. So we want you to teach them how to actually behave and not be leading a crime life anymore, right? We want you to hold youth accountable by setting boundaries, curricues, all sorts of structure. Provide care, support, and encouragement to encourage those positive things. We always want to tell them what they're doing positively, so they keep doing that because they're not used to the positive feedback. We want you to help them manage day-to-day aspects of the life, going to school, any treatment, getting them to medical dental vision appointments, gain employment, help to teach them how to budget, and try to get them to create that family contact if they don't have it, to make sure that it's a good positive support and recreational activities. The support that O A foster parents get from us is initial ongoing training. So you get your initial training that is all at home, and some of it's online, some of it's book-based. And then we continue annually with 15 training hours, and we provide those trainings for you. Financial support for the youth expenses, so there is a monthly stipend to cover the cost of housing our youth for us. You have regular support from myself as a certifier, contact by phone once a week, and then also I could do a home visit once a month. We typically have a lot more contact with our foster parents because they are very active with calling us. We have really good, strong relationships, and we're a smaller agency, so we're able to give a better support. You have 24, 24/7 crisis support, so there is after hours on call that so you'll always be able to call somebody, you're never left out there flailing by yourself. We do cover all of the mental health, medical, vision, dental, any, any kind of expenses that the youth may incur in that aspect, we cover that. We are looking for more diversity. O A needs to increase the diversity in within our homes. We look for anybody that can adequately provide cultural competent care to youth of color and LGBTQ, so that way we can be inclusive to all youth. And that's not saying that you have to be somebody of color to help with our youth, just being open and wanting to seek out their cultures. So that was a quick condensed version of what we have to offer. My information is up on this screen, so that if you have more questions for me, feel free to reach out. I have also left flyers and brochures on the back table with some pens for everybody if they want to take it. The bit, the best way to help us is by following us on social media, telling people about us. If you have a business or know somebody that owns a business that could hang a flyer for us, get the word out. Currently in Marion County, I have one foster home for our entire state in Marion County. So there is a huge need, and I am currently actually just posted an ad today looking for a home for a 16-year-old female who is looking for a foster home. If you want more information, please feel free to reach out to my phone or email. But yeah, anybody have any questions right now that I can answer? I have a few minutes. All right, well, thank you so much for letting me present.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Visitors and public comment, do we have any public comment?
We have no public comments and no one online.
And then we're not to number three is the consent agenda. They have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to number four, public hearings, there is no public hearings this evening. Number five, old business, there is no old business. Number six, new business, a water. Number eight, water conservation and management plan proposals. We will invite Matt Etzel to provide discussion.
Good evening, Matt Etzel, Assistant Public Works Director. Before you have a couple of proposals for a water conservation and management plan. In 2015, the city contracted with Keller and Associates to develop a water master plan. And in that water master plan, we had a water conservation and management plan. We got notified by Water Resources that we need to update that plan, and they no longer accept the plans embedded in the water master plan, so it has to be a whole new separate plan. We reached out to our city engineer and a couple other different sub consultants that do this kind of work. All of them are extremely busy with other cities that are also having to change their plans. And we had actually even considered doing it ourselves. It would be quite a workload for us to do it ourselves. And in that process, talking with Water Resources, they had recommended O A W U, which is Oregon Association of Water Utilities, which were a member. And they gave us a proposal, which was the lowest, and taking the recommendation from Water Resources that O A W does these, and they've done a lot of them for Water Resources. We thought it was a probably the best proposal to recommend for approval.
Council have any questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the O A W U proposal for a water conservation and management plan with a not-to-exceed amount of $16,500 from Fund 012-620 as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Moving on to six B, forklift or public works building, Matt?
Yeah, so now that our public works facility is wrapping up, we're going through and trying to get some things to help us utilize the spaces that we have there the best. And one of those spaces, we have an area above the offices, which we're going to store a lot of the community event stuff and different parts up above the offices. And right now, we we have a fork attachment for our backhoe, which is not ideal for driving around a brand-new building and trying to get stuff up there. So for the last couple of months, we've been looking for some used forklifts. One, because we don't use them a ton, but and we thought we could get a fair deal on a used one. New ones are around $45,000 to $50,000, brand-new. And we found a couple different used ones ranging from $18,000 to $12,000. This, the one that we were recommending is a heister, a 2005 heister, and it was $11,000. It's being sold by a local company in Turner that services forklifts. And they recommended this one, saying that they're the best to service, they're easiest to find parts. They've gone through and refurbished it, checked everything, made sure it was safe, and everything was running in good order, and have listed it for sale. So we thought we would try to jump on that opportunity and get it as we're starting to, hopefully in the next two weeks, start moving into the new building and start putting stuff up above the offices and.
The council have any questions? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of heister S60FT in the amount of $11,000 from Willamette Valley Forklift LLC from Fund 016-800 as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to six C, traveling wheels agreement, City Administrator Ron Harding will present the information.
Thank you, Mayor. I feel like Matt got the easy presentations tonight, but I'll try to get through these. The first one is traveling wheels agreement that's rolling to Corn Fest. We did this last year, basically it's a free skating event in Mill Creek Park on Thursday before Corn Festival. Everybody's invited. They supply the skates and the staff in the area. All we do is sign this contract with them and give them, let them, let them use that area of the park. It's exactly the same agreement as last year. We've just changed the dates, and I'm happy to answer any specific questions if council has any.
This is the Wednesday or the Thursday, Thursday before?
Yeah.
I went to this last year. I dropped in, and it was a really good attendance, and the community really seemed to love it.
I've had people asking if it was coming back.
Yes.
They'll be excited.
Is there, does council have any questions? Is there a motion?
Yeah, I moved authorize the CJ Harding execute the service contract with traveling wheels incorporated, the amount of $1,000 to provide the skating event park as presented.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Okay, moving on to six D, ordinance 724 FTX franchise agreement, Ron will present.
Yeah, so FTX Visor, also known as Visor, is one of our local franchise businesses that utilize the city's rideaways as part of their business operation. Their franchise agreement actually expired last June, and we've been working on getting a new agreement negotiated with them. This agreement before you is a kind of a new baseline agreement that we've modeled. You've approved a couple of these, I think. FCS, SCTC, I think was the one, yeah, SCTC out of Dayton was the last one we did. And this is all under our revised communication ordinance. The only difference with this particular one from the last agreement is we did increase late fee penalties in this one a little bit. We've, we spoke with the company representatives, and they're in agreement that that's appropriate and fine for them. And had no other comments and asked us to go ahead and bring this forward for adoption. Happy to answer any questions if you have any specific questions. And I don't know if anybody's online or any of the audience that are from FTX or Visor, but we might want to see if they have any comments as well.
No one online.
Okay.
Council have any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
So because this is an actual ordinance, we'll need to have two motions like we would do if we want to adopt it at one meeting.
I move to approve the first by title only of ordinance 724 granting a franchise for communication purposes to FTX Networks LLC by the City of Amesville as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
I move to approve the second by title only of ordinance 724 granting a franchise for communication purposes to FTX Networks LLC by the City of Amesville as presented by staff.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to six C, resolution 05-24, adopting a limitation of liability for public trails and structures, Ron?
So it's kind of funny, we there the did somebody say? Okay, it was kind of funny because over the last couple of years, there's, there's been a lot of discussion around liability on trails for cities. There was a case in Newport where there was an injury. They sued the city. Typically, we would have had what we call recreational immunity for use of recreational areas as city governments providing free recreation. But that suit was successful, and our insurance carrier, CIS, had recommended to a lot of the cities that they close their trails down if they're unimproved, which would close a lot of trails in Oregon, because most Oregon trails are not approved to a specific standard. The legislature took the issue up in this last session, and they did adopt a a fix that was like a short-term fix with limitations. But as part of that process and our research of that, there also was ORS 105668. Now, even though that fix is in place temporarily while they determine a long-term solution, it was recommended that cities under 500,000 in population adopt the limits of liability waiver that's under this ORS 105668. And basically, if there was any gross negligence on the city's part related to a trail, we would still be liable for that, but it does cut down some of our general liability exposure. And so our our attorneys recommended that we go ahead and adopt this either by ordinance or resolution. We prepared a resolution for you tonight. And I'm happy to answer any further questions if you have anything.
Do we have trails in Amesville other than Highburger?
Well, we have trails that are located within our park, like Porter Moon Park has trails in addition to Highburger. And of course, we're, we're getting, I mean, we're prepping to work on our new park. And that'll have some trails, and you know, they won't be, you know, asphalt that are paved or anything like that, so. It may be an extra precaution, but I like to take those.
Does that cover us for the long term?
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that have to be a trail, or could it just be the grassy area and?
You know what I read, this is specific to, it seemed like it was specific to trails.
It also talked about recreational.
And it could be, it says trails and structures on on the, on the ordinance, so, but a lot of smaller cities are adopting this resolution. It's kind of a trend, that's how I, it came to my attention, it was on the listserv. And a lot of cities are just, and then, so we inquired with our city attorney, and they're like, yes, you should, you should take that action.
That was the only question I had, if that would cover us beyond trails and structures.
The legislative fix that they had this year, and they actually had to do one for all parks a few years ago, if you remember, right after a Portland case. They've been putting in patches for recreational immunity. The, the difficulty is when those are challenged legally, you, you feel like that that's in place, but there's been a number of court cases that have been successful. So it just seems like there's more and more opportunities where we have more and more exposure with those areas.
If there's no further questions or discussion, is there a motion?
I'm moved to adopt the resolution for 524, adopting limitation of liability. I have 668.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to resolution 06-24, establishing water and sewer rates. Ron?
Yeah, so as council knows, each year in May, we have to reassess our utility rates and looking at the increased costs. Typically, what we've historically done is an average of a 3% increase in those rates to keep up with the rate of inflation. As council knows, one of the things that we do is we track our income and expenses through our forecasting tool, our forecasting model. If we look at our forecasting model, in the water side, the 3% works just fine, maintaining that level of financial sustainability that we've set in policy. On the sewer side, we've had a lot more expenses. The cost of maintaining the sewer system, even in its current stage, has been much more than a 3% increase. Really, it needs to be at least an 8% increase based on our forecast model. However, staff is recommending, or at least giving council the option for this year at least, to maintain that 3% level in both water and sewer. And the reason why we think that's a prudent step is because next year we will be implementing our large capital facilities project into our rates. And council hasn't had a chance to see the presentation from our consultants that's working on what those rates look like. But there'll be some significant rate increases, certainly not the scary scenarios that we thought about a year or two ago. But they will be significant, and we just think it's better to, to maybe reassess it on that, at that anniversary, which would be next May, is when we would be looking at that increase to go into effect. And what that does is that gives us a year to make sure that we're really having good conversations with the community about what that looks like and what impact it is going to have on, on each household. So we would, we would be supportive if council set those rates with just the 2%, 3% increases in both water and sewer. But of course, if, if you feel it's, you know, if you fill the 8%, which is, would keep the utility running consistently is warranted, you could just change that percentage however you like it. The plan would be for sometime in late June or early July, we would start having that presentation with FCS, which is the company or the consultant that we hired to look at rates. That would be basically the beginning of being able to have that conversation of what those rates would look like with the community. There certainly, we've seen the drafts. We don't want to say what those numbers are until we actually get a final. But it's certainly much lower of an increase than we expected. However, people will fill it, and you know, some people will struggle with those. So.
Yeah, does exhibit A, does that include the 3%?
Pardon me?
This.
The reason A, that includes it, yes.
Can you talk into, because it doesn't pick up on Zoom?
Does that include this?
Yes.
So this is with the 3%?
That is with three in both water and sewer, yes. And the rates would go into effect, we adopt them tonight, but they actually will come on the July 1 bill is when community will actually see them.
I, I have some thoughts and questions. I know that in the long run, eventually the sewer bill, the sewer portion of the bill is going to go up. And my worry is, is the 3% enough to ease the transition when that larger bill comes? So right now, we're looking at a smaller increase and then a bigger increase later. Would it be better if we did like a 5% where it's somewhere in the middle? So that it's an easier adjustment for the community when that larger one comes? I, I don't, I myself, when I'm doing my finances, when we think about like preparing for a marathon, you do like a few miles, a couple of weeks, then you add a couple more miles, and eventually you don't, you don't realize that you've already ran this marathon and you're ready to run. That's what I do when I have big changes in finances, so I don't know if that 3% is going to be a big gap. That's what I worry about. If we only do 3% now, is it going to be a big change when that bigger bill comes in, when we have to add the sewer bill in?
Well, and we, we wrestled with these questions when we were making the recommendation to council. The difference between 3% and 5% is a dollar. And the, the increase is going to be much larger than that. So really, that's not easiness. It's, it's not making enough of an impact to lessen what that looks like on the other end next year, and we think just keeping it, try, you know, the last few years through COVID. Next year, and we think just keeping it, try, you know, the last few years through COVID. Uh through the uh accelerated inflation rate. We've really looked for ways to cut back on costs and different things to continue to try to serve at that three percent increase. Range so that our residents didn't feel that impact as much. It just seems like the difference, and I've looked at it from the eight percent, so the difference even between the three and the eight percent is two dollars. And then you look at that and you're like, okay, if we go from a a two dollar transition, maybe over a. You know, forty or fifty dollar increase next year, is two dollars going to have an impact? I think we're better off, my opinion where I landed. Was keep it at the three percent this year and then have that good conversation. So the community can plan for that larger increase, because if it's forty dollars or forty two dollars, I'm not really sure. That that impact, one way or the other, is going to be any different.
Is that three percent enough to cover projected inflation? I know that we had inflation really hit. Uh Oregon and we weren't, we weren't ready for it.
Yeah, it's not, it's not enough to cover the standard inflation rate. However, the utility is fine for this year, next year we'll have a reset moment with the big project. And uh and then we'll, 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 if if we, if everything follows the model. That FCS has put together, that one time adjustment. Um, along with our, we're calculating in a three percent. Increase uh inflationary increase as time goes. Goes on, because historically, that's what it's been. Um, and if we continue to do that, we should be fine unless inflation rises even higher. It's really your choice. Um, I personally, I think taking the year to have a good. Conversation with the community is 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 worth the two dollars. Or three dollars or whatever it might be. But the model supports at least an eight percent increase.
I would, I I want to hear all your guys' thoughts, honestly, like this is a huge thing for our town, so.
I hate to do too little right now because, you know. Maybe that two dollars will make a difference. Will doing this for an extra year that much? Put any more money in the bank to hit that forty two and not really. I mean, it's kind of. Our utility is so small, the difficulty is our utility is not large. And when you talk about. Um, a five percent increase over every ratepayer in the community, which is fourteen hundred users. It, the total of that is less than a hundred thousand dollars. And when you think about it, I mean, we just had a hundred thousand dollar, you know, we just had a repair that was. Uh more than that uh here recently and so, or close to it. That's not a lot of money for the utility. Uh and that's why. It's difficult to have, when we're doing a project like the. You know, twenty eight million dollar wastewater project, it's it's difficult to have that impact really narrow because. It's a large impact on each ratepayer throughout the year, so the difference between, let's say, the three percent and the eight percent is. Forty thousand dollars. Um, I think is what I calculated with the mayor the other day. And um. I just don't know that forty thousand dollars is going to make or break the utility at this point, I. You know, that's why we we did this analysis at the staff level and we just felt like, let's just keep it at the three percent. Um, you know, the the community is accustomed to that, it is a low number and maybe it buys us some. Time and some goodwill to talk to the community about that larger impact.
We don't know what that's going to be yet.
I know what the estimates are, but I'm hesitant to say them because if if I give you a number and that. They come in to do their presentation and it's off, then I feel like. I've given you a disservice, but but a few months ago. Our estimates internally were eighty dollars. Of an, it was an eighty dollar increase for the sewer facility, I can tell you that it's much less than that.
I think another thing to consider too is that. Power is, our utilities are also going to be going up. Electricity and garbage. For us, it's not about profits, for us, it's the livability of the community and and getting them prepared for. Uh whether it's a twenty dollar change or, you know, a seventy dollar change, it's pretty substantial and. Especially in our economics, our demographics. I don't want to not be prepared for inflation, but the same time I realize that everyone is is being hit.
Yeah, our liability insurance, I think, is going up twenty percent this year, um that's across the state. Uh, and these aren't even related to personnel costs, these are just like liability insurance to run the city. Trying to think of what some of those other numbers were, but we have multiple. Expense, uh, oh, our electricity, eighteen percent, that's another one, multiple expenses are going up. Um, and and we 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 can deal with those, we can manage those within the. The utility because they're a fraction of the overall utility operation. But I think we're okay with the three percent, i- if council wanted to take that action. Uh, I think we're fine, I I I wouldn't. Um, I I'm not concerned about the utility over the next couple of years. Next year, we're going to have to relook at everything, so.
We come back in six months, maybe if we needed to, to add a couple more. Percentage, and so it's gradually.
I mean, we could, I just don't know if I would recommend it only because um. Our rate, our our utility account holders notice the increases and we go through a a period. At the counter, after we do an increase like this every year, even though we've done it on the same anniversary date every year. We go through a period of time of explaining that, why we did that to. Each person that comes to the counter and, um, you know, people notice even a few dollars, they they notice that increase. And I just don't know that we get, we're gaining enough. Um, a couple of dollars is going to get us enough that it's worth the work on the back end, you know what I mean?
And I can tell you, we did that quite a while back and it was not popular at all. Maybe in the newsletter keeps. Suggestions for lowering your sewer bills, don't flush your toilets, don't.
I would really like that.
Really a way to lower your sewer bills, it's not like water usage, it's just a flat fee.
Yeah, once we get the presentation by the consultant FCS. I would really like to do a very extensive outreach effort with the community to. Let them know what that dollar amount is and when to expect those increases. And um, you know, maybe resources for those folks that. Uh are struggling, there are some resources out there that we align people with. Uh, and just get prepared for that conversation.
This feels like. The bigger rate, it would be better to have that actual study, that actual. Proof to show why, because right now we don't have that.
Well, right now we have our forecast model, which is, which is our. Community outreach tool that we use, and so we can show the operation of the utility, the actual cost of the utility through. Historical perspective and the cost moving forward. Um, we didn't, we didn't, we felt it was better to have an outside consultant that specialized in that work. To come in, so it wasn't being presented by. City staff, it was being presented by a consultant that's trained to do that. And they'll dial in. Factors that are micro analyzing certain factors that we wouldn't micro analyze, so.
You know, do we know when that um report's going to be ready?
I don't have a date, my expectation is late June or early July, um that we'll start, we'll bring the first presentation will come to council. And then um, you know, we'll, we'll do other outreach from that.
It just seems like the three percent is easier to explain now, because that's our regular process. Then we have a bigger one, we have the support of the consultant.
And I've seen their forecast, I've seen their modeling that they're using and and they literally have every number tied down. To a debt and interest rate, some sort of city obligation, so it's very comprehensive. Couple of days ago, when I first read this, I was a little surprised to see three percent, three percent. I thought sure you were going to be, thought that we need to ask ten percent, ten percent. So I'm, I like the three percent. Is it, is it too little?
I I think for me, what's, what stands out when I read the background, right? Is the, in the, in the third paragraph. The sewer rate has additional factors for considerations, rates could be increased up to eight percent to keep up with inflation. Operating costs and current capital reserves and debt services. I don't, I don't want to raise the rates at all. But I don't want to put us in a spot where we have to make up for things that we weren't prepared for either.
Yeah, I I really feel like we're in a good place and I I wouldn't have recommended the three if I thought it put us in any type of a dangerous situation. The danger situation is three years out or four years out, and so. If we're reassessing and reacting next year, we're still fine. Um, nothing's happening to the utility in the next two years according to the forecast model. And um, you know, we can weather some ups and downs, there's a little bit of cushion that's built into our budget. Um, as as an example, we just went through a few, well. Seems like this year in both water and sewer, we had a lot of repairs, I I, but that doesn't happen every year. Uh, under the way we budget through Oregon, uh is we have to plan for almost that worst case scenario each year. And so. I think it would just be crazy if we had more breakdowns two years in a row, I think that's probably unlikely. And so there's probably going to be money that's in the budget that will go back to the beginning fund balance. We've got a little cushion in there. And again, we're not talking about the utilities not going in the red this year, um it's a few years. Uh, two years out, it'll drop below our ninety day reserve policy. If we spend everything, and I don't expect that we will, so I'm still feeling good about the three percent. Um, if we held, if we held. The process and the assumptions the way we always do, eight percent is what we need, that's why it's in the report. Um, but I I really think. I really think we need to have that conversation with the community and prepare them for the. Larger increase and it's hard to talk to them about next year if they're still focused on. The increase from this year. And I'd like to have that conversation shorter, so we can really get into what's going to hit their uh household budgets.
I think we should go with the recommended three percent.
I think if we go with a recommended three percent, we would, we really need. A good engagement plan for the community and and op- and educational opportunities, not necessarily going door to door like we did. With petition, but something, something just as motivational.
I really use that time to prepare.
I think a letter. Just on that issue only directly to each residence would take care of that.
Yeah, and we were actually.
Put actual information in there, not like putting it on the water bill or anything, but an actual letter. To the community and mailed to each residence would take care of that.
And let them know that we will have more information when we have the study complete.
And we will have hearings and everything else.
Yeah, well, I think we do the study before we do the letter.
I'm recommending that, but I'm just saying, a letter directly to the residents with the information in it. Would be a good outreach start and let them know we have hearings and information meetings that they can come to. That that would take care of it, and I think that staying at the three percent each would be fine. When you do your letter and put information out. Let our community know that we didn't have a choice, and that's something we just wanted to go and build a new sewer.
Yeah, and we've reinforced that message, I mean, we've really done a lot of outreach the last two or three years with the community, letting them know about the project. Uh, you know, uh, what the challenges were that we were facing in doing the project and letting, also letting them know that this is a. It's actually a federal EPA mandate that's being administered through DEQ. Um, and it's really, it's nobody's fault, the conditions have changed to allow us to discharge. Our treated wastewater into any streams or creeks and. And so that that wastewater has to be uh. Purified to a higher level than we have the capability to do. And when we started this challenge. In twenty seventeen, I believe twenty eighteen is when we had the notices from DEQ. Um, the cost to build that facility was around twelve. Uh, million dollars, or that was our estimates, and now that cost estimate is twenty eight million. The plan really hasn't changed, the focus hasn't changed, but the cost. Of everything is so escalated the last four or five years. Um, and so the longer we wait, um, the more expensive it just becomes or the bigger burden. It is, and so we've, we've actually tried to stay ahead of DEQ's enforcement schedule. Um, because if we can do it even a year earlier, that may lower that cost.
And and we didn't start the process in twenty eighteen because.
We did start the process in twenty eighteen.
Immediately.
It did start, it takes forever to get all your.
Well, they're so, you have to do a certain amount and then they have to approve it, and then you do to the next step and they have to approve it. And they take six months, we get it in in thirty, sixty days, we've worked very hard to get things in in a timely manner. And then we sit and wait and they usually wait until almost the deadline to get us any answers.
And and the reason, the reason we're a, we're going to be uh in a position where that cost to the community is much lower. As we've taken that time to be very. Aggressive in acquiring grants and right now we're, we've received about nineteen and a half million dollars in grants. Um, and we also were able to position ourselves to get a very uh. Low interest, I think it's like one point five percent interest rate over a forty year period. On the money that we are borrowing. Um, and we did that through that process by being very proactive and aggressive, so. The cost of the community is far less than our expectations. Um, but even today, when you go out to eat and, you know, I mean, I don't know about you guys, but. I get sticker shock at either the grocery store or the restaurant, everything's just hyper inflated.
I would like to move to approve resolution zero six dash two four, establishing water and sewer rates for the city of Almsville, presented by staff at three percent each. All those in favor? My vote is no.
Was a very good discussion and I appreciate your thoughtfulness and and the detailed analysis there. Um, I'm sure the community will appreciate where we landed and hopefully we can have that conversation.
Hopefully we can understand we only do what we have to do when we have to do it. So we have to do this, when we have to do the other, we do it because we have.
The motion did pass, um, moving on to. Six F, oh no, six. Six G, Almsville Historical Society Museum Agreement, Ron?
Yeah, this is our uh, our lease with the uh Almsville Historical Society, uh it is for this. Uh, old historical building here in the um west corner of the parking lot. And the Historical Society uh staffs and runs our museum. Uh, which is located there, and one of the things we do is we make the building available through uh a. Low, let's say a low lease arrangement, but basically, we're just happy that we've got an organized group that is one. Assembling and cataloging historical artifacts. assembling and cataloging historical artifacts to preserve the community's history. And uh and it's all volunteer and it's a very robust group. Um, this is the uh, the lease was signed ten years ago. And this is the tenth anniversary, so it's up for renewal. And staff is just simply suggesting that we renew the new lease agreement um to extend it another ten years. Otherwise, it has not changed.
Are there any questions? Your motion?
I move to approve Amsoil, Amsoil Museum Lease Agreement with Amsoil Historical Society as presented by staff. Did you hear that, okay?
Yes.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to six H, Councilor Casera's resignation.
So I'm sure like most of you, I was taken back a little bit at uh Councilor Casera's resignation at the last uh meeting. Uh, I wasn't prepared for it. Uh, there is some work that we have to do now now that he has provided a resignation. One is under the city charter. Uh, the city council has to by motion declare the seat vacant. It, for all intensive purposes, is vacant, uh because he were past the date um in his resignation letter, but uh the charter still does require a motion. Uh, and then um some conversation from council on how you would like to proceed filling the vacancy. There really is just up to council. There's broad discretion um on how long you would like to leave uh the position open uh before considering applications, what kind of process that you would like to go through to fill um that vacant seat and then that person, whomever that person is, would um fill the position until the expired term, the original term. So I think there's two years uh left, a little over two years.
Two and a half? Two and a half years left.
Yeah, and so um you're you're, there's no timeline as far as a rush. You don't have to rush. Uh, you can take your time, or if you've got an interesting person that you think would be a good candidate, you could fill it at really any point. So that's the conversation we need to have.
So first, we need a motion to declare the seat vacant. Is there a motion? I can't make the motion, guys.
But yes, I have the seat vacant.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes. We now have a vacant seat on city council. Uh, the next is to decide on how we want to move forward on that. We've done it a couple of different ways. Um, we've done where people apply and we had open interviews here at the community center. Uh, we've also done it where people apply and um we reached out individually and and spoke with them and then we made motions here at council.
And I I can also make one other uh uh observation uh that's an option for council is you could say, as an example, um, let's advertise the open position for four weeks. Uh, our next council meeting, yeah, that'll work. And then you could review how many applications we've received and then you could either close the applications, you could extend the application period. And at that point, if you have one applicant, your process may be different. If you had six applicants, you may think about a different process. And it could be at that time where you decide what that process is gonna look like. So it's not like you have to make all those decisions today. Uh, but we do need to go ahead and get it posted and advertised and then um, we need to know how how long you would like to leave it open. Our next meeting will be the tenth of June. So, you know, we could leave it. Um, we could set the original closing date for um, the week prior to that would be like the third, probably like the third or the fourth. Uh, and then you could, you could assess at that council meeting. If you had one applicant, you want more, you could extend it. Um, however you'd wanna do it. So that would be up to you. We could just leave it open for a couple of months and see what the interest is. It's really, it's all in your purview.
Yeah, so our next meeting was scheduled the May twenty seventh, which is the holiday, so we won't be having it. And then the next one after that is June ten. I do like the idea of letting it run open and advertising it for at at least a month. I don't know what you guys think.
I'd like to do six weeks.
Six weeks?
It puts us to the end of June and then we could choose, start by July.
Okay, I don't need a motion, just I feel like I got a good direction.
All right.
And then we can at later council meeting, as we see what the application pool looks like, you guys can talk more about what that in process looks like.
All right, that sounds good.
Good.
All right, uh, moving on to number seven, uh, city administrator report, Ron.
Yeah, so I'm not gonna get real crazy because I did a fairly detailed report uh tonight and I did put in some extra information about where we are with our current event planning, because I I know that's been uh something councils really wanted to get more information on. So I did try to update that. There's a lot going on with events in our community because we're geared up for events. And so one of the things I missed in here is the fire department is gonna host a car show as part of our corn festival event. Uh, and they're just planning it. They come to the meeting and keep us updated, but we're letting them run with that. Um, uh, so that's part of the corn festival. Um, as council knows, we had our uh open community forum for the budget uh last Tuesday. We actually had a good turnout. Some council members came. Some new members came. We talked about how the budget works uh and how it doesn't work. You know, a lot of people really don't understand when we collect money for one fund, um, for the most part, that's that money can only be used in that fund. So there's a lot of either uh restricted revenue funds, or in the case of water and sewer, uh, they're what we call enterprise funds or business operation funds. And under the law, we can't take that money and use it for other things. It can only be used in that utility. Um, and so we went through that process with uh all of those who attended and talked about how the budget worked. We demonstrated the forecasting model um and showed what this year's, some of this year's budget highlights looked like. Uh, tomorrow, is it tomorrow? It is tomorrow. Tomorrow is our actual budget meeting where we'll go through uh our uh change line items. Uh, and typically through our budget process, the way that we've done it the last uh several years is um, we go through the things that have changed. So we have a hold the line budget and we only talk about those line items or go into detail justifying why those line items changed. Um, I did wanna give you guys updates on a couple of uh Supreme Court cases that I've been following that really do have an impact back here in Oregon. And the most notable one is the uh uh Grants Pass uh Johnson case. And that's the one related to um homeless encampments uh uh throughout Oregon. And um the arguments were kind of interesting. It'll be interesting to see what they ultimately decide on that. Uh, our public workshop grand opening is set for the twenty second of May at one thirty. So we're gonna do a little ribbon cutting, give people a tour of the building. Uh, Matt said it will be done.
What day was that again? May, I think I already have it.
Yeah. Uh, and it's a really nice building and we're pretty happy that we've been able to uh get that constructed and that'll serve the community for a long time. Uh, we did get another hundred and twenty five children tickets donated today for the circus. Uh, we only have a week and I'm not sure we can give away another hundred and twenty five children tickets. Um, so spread the word. Anybody that has kids or knows people, they don't have to live in Amsoil. They can be from anywhere. We don't care. Um, we've got plenty of circus tickets.
City Hall.
Oh, City Hall, yeah, yeah. If you wanna bring the kids, yep, let them know. We'll probably reach out to the school this week because we've got we, our original plan was to give tickets to just all the kids in the elementary school, but then our thought was, well, a lot of those kids probably won't go and then it's a wasted ticket. So we were distributing them at City Hall, but we will reach out to the school just to see if they know anybody that wants to go.
What's the age limits on that?
Twelve?
Twelve, I think.
Yeah.
I think it's two to twelve, yeah.
Two to twelve.
Okay, so thirteen is an adult. And then the senior tickets um are sixty five and up, and that's the same price as the kids, which I think is eight dollars.
Eight dollars. Yeah, so we did a really good job getting sponsors for that. So I think we're around three hundred and twenty five to three hundred and fifty kids tickets. And right now, we've gotten about a hundred and fifty, about half of those.
And then for, is there any criteria that needs to be met for them to get the ticket? Do they just, the parents just need to come into City Hall?
You got five kids and one parent, come get five free tickets and buy one parent. We don't care.
An adult has to go with them, so.
Yeah, an adult has to go, so we make you buy an adult ticket, but otherwise. Yeah. And then um, I don't really think I have anything else. Um, oh, I I did wanna touch on uh this out of the the uh packet. We did order a uh a nice uh desk plaque for uh Nico. And I know he does have an event planned at the park um and just wanted to know if council wanted that presented at the park. Or if they'd like to invite him back to the council, it's really your choice. Um, but we did get him a really nice plaque, thanking him for his years of service to the community.
Nico is having a um event on June twenty second down at the park. So um, I would like to present it there, but if you guys wanna invite him back, I'm okay with that, too.
Yep. And it's actually at City Hall already, so you can come by and look at it if you'd like to see it. That's all I have unless you have uh questions for me.
I don't have any further questions. Moving on to mayor and counselor reports. Does anyone have anything to report? I don't either this time around. Um, anything for good of the order? Is there any correspondence? Nope. We have no executive session, so we can go ahead and adjourn the meeting at eight, ten P M.